I guess we're at 12:02 or so. You can go ahead and get started, you think, Andrew? Yeah, I'm sorry for the background noise. Hopefully that'll shut off in a second. This, hello everyone. Thanks for joining us. This meeting is being held pursuant to and in compliance with emergency ordinance number 20-a6, an emergency ordinance to ensure the continuity of government during the COVID-19 disaster. The committee members who are electronically present at this meeting are, I have to pull up the list. Me, Ally Pesh. We have Sandy Hausmann, Brian Day, David Mitchell, Doug Bates, Joe Por, Costas Alavertis, Sean Byrd, Tom Loach, and Valerie Long. And we have Anne Malik, our Whitehall Supervisor, and Jenny Moore, our representative on the Planning Commission. The persons responsible for receiving public comment are the Croze Community Advisory Committee and the Admiral County Department of Community Development. The opportunities for the public to access and participate in the electronic meeting are posted on the Croze Master Plan Update page at www-publicinput.com/imaginecroze and on the Admiral County Calendar. We also have at our meeting county staff members Andrew Newpohl, Rachel Falkestein, Michaela O'Cardy, Charles Rapp, and Carolyn Schiefer present today. That's all the official talk I have to do. We have a lot to get through. I have one member that asked for a minute at the beginning to say something. So Sandy, do you want to go ahead and take a minute now?
Sure, sure. I'm going to send this on to the Board of Supervisors, but I wanted to share it with the committee first. And before we get into a piecemeal discussion of this new master plan, I want to talk a little bit about the premise that's underlying this whole process. Creating development zones like Croze to preserve the rural character of other places seemed like a really good idea at the start. But I think over time, one big flaw has emerged, and it's only going to get worse now that we're in the midst of a pandemic and recession. There is just not enough money to provide the infrastructure that we need to support a much bigger population here in Croze. And unless we're willing to raise taxes and fees imposed on developers, the county really is not going to be able to pay for services that the current population of Croze needs, not to mention growth that's already sort of baked in by our current zoning. Our schools are in short and desperate need of more space. Our residents are increasingly frustrated by traffic problems, and that's due in part to the lack of road capacity. We've, I think, set aside too little land for parks to serve a growing population of families, and we really haven't made any provision at all for wildlife. So last week, a developer in Croze clear-cut eight acres of wooded land that are adjacent to Croze Park. And I would think most of our residents probably considered that property part of the park, until we found out that 32 townhomes would be going in there. That means probably about 64 more cars using already overburdened streets, Hilltop, High Street, Tabor, to access an already overburdened Croze Avenue. This development was already zoned for high density, and I'm sure there are other projects that will be built by right adding to the community's problems. To minimize growth until infrastructure catches up with need, I am asking the county board not to approve any further upzoning, that is, no increase in density, and to stop facilitating growth until the county is able to support it. Rather than sign off on a modified map, I'm asking the Board of Supervisors to make the following changes. First of all, deny any increases in the number of residential units allowed by right, and do not rezon land currently designated for other purposes until you're able to meet the increased demand for services, schools, roads, and parks. And as we wait for these new resources to become available, I would really like to see the county do a study on the need for wildlife corridors. Otherwise, we're going to end up with a fairly large community where crashes with deer are an unfortunate and dangerous problem. Second, I want the Board to make growth in Croze less profitable for developers and more beneficial to the people who already live here. The Board could do that by immediately passing a tree ordinance that makes developers replace or pay for the replacement of every tree cut down. Come over to Croze Park and look at the stack of wood that was cut there on eight acres. It's really shocking. And we should be thinking really globally and acting locally by doing our little part to save the planet. Finally, I'd like the Board to lobby the legislature to restore previous rules governing proffers. So ask Richmond to give the county greater taxing authority so we can pay for these new classrooms, parks, and sidewalks. And finally, increase community access to the Board and awareness of plans for development. Again, many of my neighbors were shocked when these big machines came in and took down eight acres of wooded land. Every resident within a mile of new construction should be informed by mail of plans well before the Board signs off so that people can weigh in. Board meetings should be held in the evening when working people are able to attend. And the Community Advisory Board really should consist only of local residents and businesses, not developers. Builders have plenty of access to decision-makers and really shouldn't be part of this advisory process. Thank you.
Here, here.
We're gonna have plenty of time for everyone else to chime in. And I also wanted to explain, we've got a great showing of attendees. I'm seeing 38 or 39 right now, and I just want to explain to all of you guys that when we get to questions and discussion, you can use the raise hand button on Zoom, and we will do our best to get everybody a chance to talk, and Carolyn can help unmute you when it's your turn. So we won't see your video, but you will have a chance to speak and we can all hear you. And then any panelists who are able to use video, that really is helpful also. And I think we'll get going with the first topic, and that's Rachel and Andrew.
All right, I think I'm going to kick us off. Andrew is sharing a screen though, with the, we have a couple of slides to start off with. But to your point, Ally, that you just mentioned, the Land Use Plan and the questions we are bringing to the CAC and the public today to hear your feedback. We also have an online feedback opportunity, and we should be putting that URL in the chat for people to, if we run out of time today or people wanted to share some thoughts, we welcome you to go online and share those with us. We want all members of the community to be able to participate and weigh in. It's not just for the CAC. CAC is the advisory group that we look to with a lot of these questions, but we also want the community at large to feel welcome to weigh in. So I'm just starting with a little bit of background and kind of why we're here today and how we got here. Today's meeting is going to focus on the land use, the draft land use map that staff has put together for the community. And I want to just touch base on kind of what is land use before we get into the particulars of the map. Land use is a future vision for the community of Croze. We took what you had in your 2010 master plan and starting point and made some tweaks and revisions based on things that have happened since 2010. Also, a couple of new ways of doing things, which we'll talk about, that we've done at the county. And also the feedback we've heard to date on the process and some of the topics we've discussed, and we've tried to incorporate that all into a map. This land use map is a vision for the future. It's a policy tool. It does not hold, it does not hold the weight of law. So it's a policy tool to guide this future decision-making. So once we get through kind of the land use and get to a place where we have a good draft that we're ready to move forward on, we'll focus on implementation, and we can identify implementation steps that help bring this vision closer to reality. But the land use is just a policy, and there is still underlying zoning covering all properties in Croze that may or may not match up exactly with what the vision is. So we have to identify kind of what those steps are that we want to get us closer to that future state that we identified in our land use plan. So I just wanted to point that out. This is, there is a distinction between zoning and between land use, even though sometimes some of the terminologies is similar. What we're talking about today is that policy land use document that looks at the future. The other point I wanted to make before moving forward is just kind of what our steps are after today's meeting. So this is to get feedback on the land use map. We've had several land use conversations with the community, with the CAC to this point. We plan to take all the feedback we hear today from the community and from the CAC and the feedback we hear online, and bring that to the Planning Commission at an October work session and get their input. From there, we'll continue to revise the draft based on the input we've heard from you all and from the Planning Commission. So I just want to say, this is a draft. It's very much an iterative process that we will go through. This is not by any means a final document. It's kind of a starting point for discussion to get feedback and help us move forward and continue to iterate and get to a place where we're, have a final land use map for the community. So Andrew, if you could move on to the next slide. So I want to talk about kind of the major themes of what you're going to see in this updated land use map. A lot of them are broad changes that we've done in our land use planning in other communities, and we're bringing them out to Croze with this updated land use plan. And that is specifically how we look at green space. We have, we have better mapping tools now than we did in 2010, and we can identify those more precisely. We also have broken out green space into different types of green space because that has certainly caused issues in the past where people assume it means it's a park. All green space is park space, and we've broken that out into two different categories. Also, we have two new tools we're rolling out with this land use plan for Croze that we haven't brought to other areas of the county, and we'll talk about those in more detail. One is a new land use category, middle-density residential. Another is an overlay focused on those neighborhoods around downtown. And then lastly, we have some new land use categories that have been updated since 2010. And there are some land use categories in the 2010 map that we're no longer using, so we've updated those. Their similar uses are just different names and a little bit more prescriptive in their detail. And then lastly, we've had some parcel level changes, and those are things that we've identified on our summary document and a few that we want to talk with you all about today, where there is a different land use than was shown in the 2010 map. Because of feedback we've heard or requests from property owners or various reasons, we think it makes sense to look at those parcels. So I'm going to start us off with just an overview of what the middle-density residential land use is, and then Andrew will get us into some site-specific questions. You should have seen this. I know it's probably a little bit, the scale does not work well on a screen, so hopefully you've all received these attachments, but this is what the future land use map looks like. Oh, one other thing I'll point out, I didn't mention on the previous slides is our centers designation. That's something we've been trying to be more specific about and do a better job of planning so that we have these centers identified that can be supported by infrastructure and transit to help us with our infrastructure planning. And so that's a new thing for Croze that we're rolling out here. So Andrew, if you can move forward, I'm going to talk a little bit about our middle-density residential category. So this is a new land use category that we're recommending for Croze. We have not used it yet in other parts of the county. It's the first time we're putting it on a map and trying out this new land use category. So the purpose of the land use category is to increase housing choice and affordability. We heard that was pretty important for the community and some of our early engagement. But it does so in a way that is scaled a little bit better, I think, to the development patterns people have said they want to see in Croze. So it provides these housing types that are, they're called missing because they're not built very often today, and a lot of zoning actually excludes these housing types. But they're smaller units on smaller lots. They can often be in the form of older houses that are converted to multiple units or smaller kind of clustered housing developments that become naturally more affordable because of their size and the smaller lot size that are needed to support these types of housing. If you can move forward, Andrew. So the density and form that we're recommending for the middle-density category is a density of six to 24 units per acre. We came up with this by looking at common densities for the types of housing that we're recommending with this middle-density category, and what are those common densities that we're seeing with developments of these housing types. We also took a look at a couple of developments around Croze and around the county that have these housing types already to see what the densities were to make sure it made sense as a density recommendation. And the forms we're recommending are those middle housing types that I discussed, and we talked about in some of our earlier workshops that were pretty popular among the attendees of those workshops. And those are smaller-scale, single-family houses. This picture on the top of the slide is that Bamboo Grove development that was recently approved in Croze. The cluster of houses around Central Courtyard, often called a bungalow court, that will allow for live-work units, townhomes, multiplexes or duplexes. So those smaller-scale, multifamily or smaller-scale, single-family that allow for some of those more affordable units is what's recommended within this housing space. There's a building footprint maximum, there's a height maximum of three stories, a building footprint maximum of 5,000 square feet to make sure we get those smaller-scale unit types that the community has said they wanted to see. And then just to move forward to the map and where we apply this middle-density residential, mostly areas that were previously designated as urban-density residential, we have applied this middle-density category. So those orange, lighter orange colors on the map, those were all previously, the ones that are built out were all previously urban-density. We're now applying the middle-density. It's not that we expect to see a lot of large-scale redevelopment in these areas. Most of them probably won't see much change in the time period of this master plan, but we could see small infill projects. If there's a parcel or two that is undeveloped or perhaps a conversion of existing units or accessory units, those are the types of development that would be most likely to be seen in the time period of this master plan in the area. And then we're going to talk about in a little bit, Whitegate Farm. That's the other area where we've applied this that has not yet built out. So that's kind of concluding my remarks on middle-density. We'll have time at the end to talk about if there are any questions or comments or feedback you all have on this generally. But I think we're going to move forward now with, Andrew's going to give an overview of the downtown's overlay, and then we're going to get into our parcel-specific questions.
Great. Well, thank you, Rachel. We also wanted to make sure that today we had a chance to go back over something we had discussed earlier with the CCAC, which was the downtown neighborhoods overlay we brought back to this group, I believe, in June or July of the, earlier this summer. I think we heard some feedback about that. It was important to make sure we had another chance to bring this out to the community and help make sure folks understood what these new land use categories were, that we're not currently in the 2010 master plan. So I want to find a little bit of detail about that. The downtown neighborhoods overlay we're discussing has some similarities with the middle-density residential category that Rachel just discussed. But we wanted to make sure that we were considering really, again, this question of affordable housing and housing preservation in neighborhoods around the downtown area. This overlay aims to really incentivize maintenance and keeping what we call naturally occurring affordable housing, NOAA's, in these neighborhoods around downtown, really also aiming to encourage historic preservation. A large percentage of the area surrounding downtown Croze is located within the Croze Historic District, which is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. It's a purely honorary designation. But currently, the county doesn't have many incentives, and it does not have any regulation to help preserve the historic building stock that we've heard folks really value in Croze. So really, it aims to preserve existing housing, preserve historic structures, but also allow infill development where that could potentially happen, that is really in keeping with these neighborhoods, with the scale of existing homes and the form that is currently there. So this overlay, we'll ship all the map in just a second, really applies to areas surrounding downtown that have this neighborhood density residential designation, typically, you know, single-family homes currently. And would this, about how this would be applied in practice, what this overlay does is, like every other step in the master plan Rachel addressed earlier, we really just use this to review rezonings or special use permit requests so far. The creation of an overlay does not change what a property owner can do with their property today, but it provides a frame of reference for staff and the Board and the Planning Commission to evaluate decisions or new proposals that would happen within this area. So just to reiterate, the master plan does not change zoning, but this tool kind of works in tandem with our existing zoning to help incentivize and hopefully encourage housing types that are more in keeping with what we've heard the community wants. So as far as density and form criteria, the criteria is a really important part of this. The overlay encourages three-sixteen units per acre, which is in keeping with the neighborhood density residential category that currently exists. Again, mostly a low-density category. However, the overlay works and hopes to incentivize thoughtful design, thoughtful housing inclusion by permitting some higher densities when the set of criteria are met. We want to consider the conversion of existing structure to multiple units, which would aim to preserve the existing structure, probably a historic one, maintain a level of affordability that's already there, if not more. It would apply to adding accessory dwelling on a lot that could push it above six units per acre if it's a smaller lot size, a quarter-acre lot. So we wanted to say, you know, if you're adding this but keeping the structure there, that could be okay. But also infill development that helps preserve the existing housing stock. We don't want to see tear downs in these neighborhoods around downtown. So really, this placed emphasis on preserving what's there, but also creating new stock that is, you know, in keeping with the neighborhood's scale. Again, we have some design criteria about development pattern of the surrounding streets. So for example, we want houses to be in similar positions on the lot. So on St. George, you don't want a house that is, you know, kind of looks like it was displaced there without any thought or care put to it. We want to make sure it's consistent with what's happening around, but also that it provides additional affordable or workforce housing. So a couple of examples of this. We've got a picture of a fourplex in the Belmont neighborhood in Charlottesville. Again, a similar scale house, some are massing to what you might see in some areas of St. George, maybe on a smaller lot in the city of Charlottesville. But really, the, what it looks like, it looks like a house with four mailboxes. So we just want to think about ways we can encourage the retention of housing within the downtown area, especially knowing that there's the ongoing redevelopment of the Barnes-Lumber property, and we anticipate there will be demand to live in the downtown area and be able to walk to the amenities that it has. So this is really an opportunity for us, we think, to think critically about how we preserve our housing stock that exists, how we encourage historic preservation, but also create affordable housing, at least maintain what we have within the downtown area. This area includes the neighborhoods north of downtown along St. George Avenue. This includes the historic district boundaries and some early post-war subdivisions. Areas east, west of downtown, but east of Palace Creek over here. Areas south of downtown in the Hilltop, High Street area, and east of downtown on Three Notch Road. So again, this really tries to track with historic development patterns within Croze and really focus in on these neighborhoods that are closest to downtown, where we could see some, the redevelopment of the downtown area, making this area more attractive, and want to make sure we're being careful about that area. So those were kind of the two new land use categories we wanted to share with you all today and make sure that we had a chance to go back over. We recognize these are new categories. We did have a couple of more site-specific questions we wanted to work through with the CAC and the community today. We had two of those, two or three of those areas specifically we wanted to work through. The first one we want to work through is one we discussed in July when we had a kind of a smaller meeting turnout, and we took some of your feedback from that meeting and adjusted sort of proposal and a recommendation for that property. This is the Whitegate Farm property. This is east of Park Ridge Drive and south of Route 240. So basically between where Wickham Pond is and the Centara Clinic at the corner of Park Ridge and 240. What we are recommending with this proposal with this property, that was completely shown as green space in the 2010 master plan, it was zoned rural areas, would be to provide a split of residential uses on that property that would follow the existing pattern in Wickham Pond. It would be a split between this middle-density residential we discussed, which again replaced that urban-density residential from 2010, and would have also some neighborhood-density residential, single-family development towards the back portions. The site was shown as green space, the entire parcel in 2010 to help, I think it was to quote, "break up the appearance of development on Three Notch Road, Route 240." And so we want to make sure we still try to stay in keeping with that kind of visual component of this, of that land use proposal from 2010. So the map does also show a visual buffer trying to maintain that hedgerow along Route 240's front edge. And we did show a stream buffer on there. We're still working to evaluate the status and condition of that stream right now. But the impact of this going from green space to a residential designation would potentially be increase of about 49 to 143 additional units based on just the acreage that's shown currently. So we just wanted to flag that for you all and share a little bit of information. I'll pull up the map right now. So these are the properties in question. This large green parcel that separates Wickham Pond from Park Ridge Drive. And then this is our 2020 recommended land use designation. We are showing again the front portion of the parcel closest to Three Notch Road as that middle-density residential category, keeping in kind of the same as Wickham Pond earlier, and then showing the back portions of the property as a neighborhood-density residential. We've also heard a lot throughout the entire process about the importance of this general area in connecting Wickham Pond and Highlands to the rest of Croze and providing opportunities for both pedestrian access. So we wanted to, we also are looking at how would Wickham Way extend over to Park Ridge and create better interconnection there, and how we would also incorporate opportunities for full and pedestrian access. We also note that we are currently conducting a traffic study as part of the Croze Master Plan Update and evaluating the impacts of any development on the infrastructure needs of Croze to support this area. So I just wanted to share this with you all. Again, the middle-density category kind of came from the conversation we had about this site in July of this year. Some concerns about the scale of development with the urban density, but the support for some smaller unit sizes, smaller unit types that could potentially be on this site. So we came to middle-density as again a way to, again, continue to show this pattern from Wickham Pond on the same type of development that it provided. But continue to encourage the mix of housing types that we've heard as a priority for the Croze community. So we want to bring this back to you all today with this revised proposal, get some feedback from you all about any questions, comments, or concerns you have about this recommended change. On the map we sent out with the agenda packet, we showed it as change P1, that's little bubble. So I'll turn over to Ally to kind of facilitate the discussion of this, and we'll be here to take notes and answer questions you might have.
Thanks, Andrew. Are we also able to give feedback to the downtown overlay that you talked about first? Or are we trying not to?
I think we definitely like to, we have a lot to get through today. We did have time at the end for kind of the miscellaneous questions. I think we did want to try to hit on these more specific questions earlier. If we can hold towards the end for the downtown neighborhoods, I think that'd be helpful, but if...
That's fine. I'm going to put a pin in that because I have, I personally have some thoughts, but I'll leave it to the end. And then I've got four hands up, and also I'm getting messages from attendees that the chat is not, is disabled for attendees. So if somebody could look into that. In the meantime, attendees are welcome to use the Q and A. That's what people have been doing, if you want to chime in there. All right, so I didn't quite see who's hand went up first. So Joe, would you like to chime in?
Yeah. Thanks, Ally. So I, you know, I'll caveat all of this by echoing Sandy and Tom's concerns about the overall pace of growth and keeping up with infrastructure and all of that, notwithstanding, yes, we need to address that first. But insofar as this is a long-term, looking at the long- But insofar as this is a long-term, looking at the long-term prospects of development. I support the Whitegate Farm property. As I mentioned before, this is designated as green space. It is an overgrown, dilapidated farm covered in bamboo and kudzu. So it's not really viable as sort of green space. And I think that the proposal that, that the county, that Andrew and you guys have come up with. Balances, it keeps it in harmony with the surrounding area. The pedestrian connection is critical, especially as that light industrial area just to the west hopefully will develop. Provide the place where people can have that pedestrian connectivity to a slightly more dense area. And I think that using the middle density residential. Rachel, I believe, if I'm recalling correctly, I think there's only two places where we're actually. On the map showing that middle density residential, this one and then the Old Dominion Village area. I think that's right, the new properties that are undeveloped right now. So there's not that many places where we can implement this middle density housing. And so I think this is a good example of that. And so I support this housing, I think it's a perfect. Sort of compromise here, I think there's a good spot to do it.
Sorry, as muted, um. Brian?
Basically, I'm kind of where Joe is. I'm. Super supportive of what Sandy just summarized at the beginning of the meeting. But my question is, if, if the green space designation is really just a holding pattern for a development yet to come. Why do we even have it? It seems to me that green space designation is a shame. That it doesn't have any meaning at all. Both. Whitegate and Dominion Farm are previously shown as green space, now are shown as. You know, middle density with this new designation and so forth. And, you know, I couldn't be more supportive of low-income housing. But the green space to me is just, it's trees yet to be bulldozed.
Well, I think they did fix some of that with the way that. Green space is now broken into more specific plans, but. Yes. I, so are you in favor of the middle density designation then for that parcel?
I think so, I'm just. I think until the county gets realistic about. Keeping up with the infrastructure, we ought to bring development to by right only and nothing else.
Right.
And, you know, so that designation is yes, but only in the future.
Right, so, well, I'll let other people talk. Tom, Valerie and Sandy, I think Tom was next.
Yeah, thank you. I sent out some, some questions to the. To the group and specifically to staff and I'd like to just go over those. And put some history in those for those who are relatively new to the area. When we first started out with master planning, the major reason for master planning. Was to deal with affordable housing, how to incorporate it into the community of Croze. We had just gone through a, a period of angst over this. And we looked for a better way, we did get help from University of Virginia, School of Architecture in that regard. To that end, what we came up with was, well, if we will use another cliche, was the new urbanism. And the new urbanism was that we would build communities like they did in the old days. And affordable housing would be incorporated into the fabric of the community through every new development. Okay, so that's, that was the onus, so. So when we talk about affordable housing and the community wanted, wants affordable housing. I want the people here to know that this community has a thirty-year history of being involved with affordable housing. And to that extent, I went back and I sent the, the members the data that I have. That shows what we should have as far as affordable housing, remember the community has only one option. And that's the, that's the support to fifteen percent affordable housing. In each new rezoning. To that end, we should have had in over the past nineteen years from two thousand to two thousand eighteen. Three hundred and sixteen affordable housing units. That, that's one point two per month. And I think that, you know, I'd like to see from the county their data on affordable housing. I have heard through the kind of grapevine that essentially it's been a dismal failure. And that they've only placed forty-five percent of these, they've only utilized forty-five percent of these affordable housing units. With, you know, as far as getting people into them, that would mean in Croze we lost a hundred and seventy-three of these units. So, one, that's, that's the affordable housing. Two, my big question is, is to the staff is. Again, I look at missing middle as another cliche for multifamily housing. And that was allowed under the neighborhood model. So why are we here now if this was allowed? Or to put it another way, what would be the difference between a townhouse and as part of four townhouses? In Old Trail that, that was designated affordable? And a unit in the fourplex that's designated as, as affordable? I don't see any difference and I see no reason for a separate. You know, overlay for this. The next thing is, as I said, if you zoom down on these areas that they're talking about. Most, most of those, a lot of those homes are in the county's affordable range as far as affordability. And funny, I think it has to be said, is that going back to, and I've sent you the documentation. The possible, the population of Croze, the ideal population given to us by the county was twelve thousand one hundred ninety-eight. And it was very specific, there was no asterisks, there was no average median, it said ideal maximum population. This is what we told, and at that time it would be a quadrupling of our population that we were facing. And we did this, the other caveat there was that they would provide concurrent infrastructure. So, three, three very simple questions. One, was the twelve thousand one ninety-eight by the county a lie to the, to the people of Croze? Was the concurrency of infrastructure a lie to the population of Croze? And three, again, the difference between incorporating affordable housing as the people of Croze wanted in the development of all these new developments. And now a new cliche, middle, missing middle, what is the difference? Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Valerie?
Yeah, getting back to the specific question about how people feel about the white, it means Whitegate Farm question. I want to just echo Joe's comments for all the reasons he said that it seems like a very. Thoughtful compromise, good way to handle it, especially with the road connection that it will facilitate. Otherwise, it looks like it's just zoned RA, so either you might get a couple of, you know, McMansions on the property or maybe just one. And then, or you might, it might just continue to look the way it does now, which is not very attractive. I think this is much more consistent and that the density levels are appropriate for that area. It's also right near a childcare center, so it will be convenient for those folks as well as obviously convenient to the medical center that's there. Thank you.
And Sandy?
Yeah, just a couple of questions, do we have a sense for how many jobs there are in Croze? Does it, does the county know that?
Not offhand right now, but we can try to get that number.
And, and do we have a sense for how many jobs we expect to be here in ten years? I ask because, you know, building these houses. Is assuming that some of these folks are going to work in Croze and yet I think it's pretty obvious that Charlottesville is where the jobs are. And, you know, if you build lots of affordable housing in Croze, what you're doing is adding to the traffic problems of getting in and out of Charlottesville. So I'm not, I'm not as gung ho about, you know, affordable housing in Croze. I don't think functionally speaking, that is something we should be as concerned about as we are. And to call this proposal a compromise when we will conceivably have two hundred and eighty-six cars coming and going is a bit much. I mean. I think when you do less density and you have more green space around the density, there's an aesthetic there that we're striving for. And your own goal, goal number four is to maintain a distinct rural edge. In, you specifically mentioned maintaining rural sections of Croze Avenue, but. I'm at a loss for where these are going to be because what's happening is we're building these fairly dense units. Like Wickham Pond and then, you know, the adjacent property then becomes sort of useless, overgrown. Well, yeah, because, you know, we haven't, we haven't developed it as a low-density part of town or possibly even as a park. It's, it's land that we'll never get back, I mean, once a high-density subdivision goes in there, that's it. So I, I, I continue to feel like it's not appropriate to be adding that much more traffic to two forty. And again, I question how great the need is going to be for affordable housing for workers who probably will have jobs in the city.
So would you like to see Whitegate stay?
I would not upzone it at all, I would leave it nine, what is it, nine homes can be built in there? Yeah.
Okay, let's see, I think Doug and then I have an attendee raising their hand too.
Thanks, Ally, I'll, I'll make it quick. With respect to Whitegate Farm, I think that Joe and Valerie have articulated the, the balance that, that has been. Presented to us and it's a fair one. But I do want to go back to where we started and I think it's appropriate for Tom and Sandy who have raised these issues to get the support they deserve. Let me make a suggestion though, because Sandy, you said something about no further activity in terms of construction until we've got the infrastructure in place.
No, I said, I said, no upzoning, in other words, don't invite more development than is by right. And, you know, the reality is if you build.
I understand.
Nine big homes in there, you'll have the tax dollars to support the schools. If you build a, a highly dense new development, you're going to have a lot more kids coming into the schools and the taxes will not pay for that.
Sandy, I agree with you. My point is that you don't have any measure for when we're going to be satisfied with infrastructure. I'm going to propose a, a specific object, objective. And that is to get this proffers language changed at the state legislature. And my recommendation was going to be support yours that the county board of supervisors not approve further activities. In the construction until we get the right to request from builders or expect from builders appropriate proffers that support our infrastructure. That way we will know what, what, what they're willing to build and what we're willing to accept. And that's one measure anyway of, of infrastructure that I. It's like the old joke, I've got a mule who can count, but first I've got to get his attention. And so I may have to use a two-by-four to do it, so that's, that's kind of where I am.
Yeah, good, good suggestion.
Thanks, and thanks, and I see some good feedback in the Q and A and chat box too. Carolyn, can we get my dad, Mike Marshall, next?
Yes, go ahead. He just needs to unmute, unmute himself.
I see unmute, thank you. I just want to establish that the Croze master plan got started around two thousand two when yours truly and Scott Payton. Who had noticed that several large properties in Croze had recently turned over to the hands of developers. We went to Wayne Sillenberg and we said, you guys talk about doing a master plan. And it looks like it might be time to do it for Croze because we can anticipate. Some of these developments and make sure that they're headed in the direction that we want. The people of Croze were told that the master plan was basically an indefinite, it didn't have a horizon time. The land use decisions that they made about the future were supposed to be intact for basically forever. And one of those principles that informed the plan in two thousand four when it was adopted and again in two thousand and ten was this thing we called pyramidal density. And it meant that the most dense part of town was the commercial center. And as you got away from the commercial center into the edge of, to the boundary of the growth area, you had a decrease in density. So Whitegate Farm and Dominion, whatever the name is, these are basically outrages against that principle. The principle was implied against Adelaide, if you recall, alias Sparrow Hill or whatever the name is. And it was used to basically reduce the density of that project back to where the plan said it should be. I want people to remember the growth area is based on watershed boundaries. Three-notch Road is the ridge, on the north side of the ridge you run down to the Beaver Creek, on the south side of the ridge you run down to the. Licking Hole Basin and the whole prospect is that we're going to manage the runoff from development that way. Any project on the north side of. Two forty that increases density is a threat to the water supply. Those, that project should be strictly by right, just like Whitegate Farm should be strictly by right. And. I think this principle deserves to be adhered to. I'd also like to invite Sandy to send her opening statement as a letter to the Gazette, which I would love to run. And I think it expresses the opinion of many people in Croze. The fight in Croze, every time we come back to the master plan is over, what is the future density? And the, the people of Croze were lied to, at one time there was a just huge outrage, it was two thousand six, eight range. We were told we were going to be a town of twenty-four thousand people. And that's not the deal we made when we went in. I predict that this year that. The census will show that we're above ten thousand. And if you were to extend outside the Croze growth area boundary, say a half mile or so, I suspect we're above twelve, thirteen thousand right now. So we, we want the county to show solidarity and good faith in the deal that was made with the residents of Croze. Who agreed to grow, but only on terms that were predictable. I have asked real estate agents, why do people buy houses in Croze? They say, one, they like the schools, two, they like the view, three, they like the fact that the master plan gives them predictability about the future. So the problem with our master plan now is that we have these little discrepancies between what the map says and what the text says. And these gaps have allowed people to wiggle in and exploit and get higher densities than we actually want. What needs to be fixed now is not the land use designations, it's these, these. I'll call them gaps between the text and the map and those have to be explicitly reconciled. We, we only need to tinker with the master plan, we don't need to add new commercial areas or higher density residential areas. I think this middle density category, it just ought to be chucked immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I guess. That was great, some of the, some of the comments in. Q and A theme, I don't know if everybody can read them. And the chat, but I did want to respond to Terry, I'm just wondering if. Terry says if we don't rezone Whitegate, it will be developed by right and we won't have the green space and we'll lose opportunity to make connections between Wickham Pond and the rest of Croze. I just challenged that, I don't see how. Even if we changed the land use designation, we're first of all not rezoning it in the master plan, we're just changing the designation and. No developer has to, has to make a connection that, well, no matter what we do with the land use map. So I'm just wondering why we would want to welcome more, more density. So my, my personal thought is that. I'm just going to oppose. Inviting an opportunity for, for more houses in Croze when we, when we're already behind on infrastructure and school capacity. So. I, as much as I want a trail between there, I don't think it's worth opening ourselves up to. To more townhouses there. I see, let's see, I have a comment, another attendee and also Tom with their hands up. I don't know if we can also start talking about the next question before too much time goes by. The next one seems pretty, a little bit simpler to me, but also want to get to the. The Old Trail question, so. Andrew, what do you think, should we get a couple more comments or?
I think if we can, I think we'd be good if we can move on to the next question. I think I'll share a couple of responses to, I think, what we've heard so far. And I think about the way that we've been approaching this master plan process so far. So I'll just start off and share that, just going through the Q and As and some of the comments there. We did hear about, I think Brian had the comment about the green space and how we were showing the. and how we were showing those and what the intent of those areas are. So I think one of the goals we really have with this master plan and our current work to break out the 2010 green space designation as separate, public parks and other greenways and parks and green systems categories, is to address that concern about what we are trying to accomplish here. And I think that, you know, if there are resources we are trying to protect, we want to mark those with the master plan. But with this Whitegate Farm parcel, the question we had was, while this is really shown to protect this buffer and to show this, you know, visual break on Route 240, right there, but I think we, we're comments were well taken regarding that question. We'll keep that in consideration. We, let's see. We are working on the bike pad plan as well with all these questions. So I've, I've seen a couple of comments about Whitegate Farm and how that would apply in that context. And that was a major theme we heard throughout the entire process. Regarding the, um, I think every comment we heard was on the spot, pretty well put, particularly the ones about infrastructure and the, the challenges we do face in Croze with the rapid growth that's occurred in the past 15, 20 years. I think we'll just reiterate that, um, these are really discussions that happen on the board of supervisors level. The master plan is a 20-year vision, and funding decisions about infrastructure come from the board of supervisors. So there are certainly capital funding challenges that are happening within Croze. The land use plan and the, and the transportation plan should work together. Our community facilities plan should all be right-sized to fit with the growth that's expected with that plan. And with every rezoning that comes forward, the, the criteria that the board and the planning commission evaluate a rezoning basis on does include impact and the adequacy of existing infrastructure projects. So the master plan, in terms of land uses, is silent about the timing of this development, but it is a 20-year vision, and it intends to describe what we want to see in Croze. So we will make sure we bring all these comments forward to future discussions with the planning commission, the board of supervisors, because we know these are major challenges we face within the Croze area. And certainly, um, the pace of growth in Croze the last 15, 20 years has been, has been high. And there are challenges in accommodating infrastructure and development as we move forward. But we've, we've cashed our comments, we'll pass them along to the board of supervisors, and we would like to move forward to the next question. You're also encouraged to reach out to your board and planning commission members via email. And also, just C C S S staff, we'll make sure we include that in our staff reports and, and the minutes from this meeting. We want to hear your feedback on this. So if we can move forward to the next question, it does touch on that green space concern that was raised. This was a area we also discussed in July. Again, this was really an attempt to establish consistency between the map and the text, which was a comment that was made earlier, about how we show green space and what the intended kind of development along the edges of Croze is intended to be like. This was an area that was shown almost entirely as green space in 2010, to not delineate what was supposed to be a, a landscape visual buffer from Route 250, and what was an environmental feature that could not be developed on. And these other areas where existing properties had R1 zoning that could allow some degree of subdivision to happen on this area. So we wanted to make sure that we were working to better define that and show where, if any development is to occur, we don't want to see any more of it really in this area. That's not the intent of this change, but it's really to reflect the current zoning, developable areas, and better establish consistency between the map and the intent and the text of this area. You know, has potential for development. It's not intended to be a highly developed or intensified much at all. But there is, um, we do want to see some protected areas over here. So to show what this looks like in 2010, the master plan showed almost the entirety of these parcels as all green, but did not really specify specific features that this was trying to protect with the green space designation. And a small park portion of Brownsville Road area was shown as a neighborhood density residential, three to six units. We are proposing to really kind of clarify what is a developable area, what is a protected feature, through the application of the Parks and Green Systems designation showing the buffers on Route 250 and Croze Avenue, and showing the developable area with a neighborhood density residential low, that is in keeping with the current zoning on the parcels. There's not really a change in the development potential in this area. It's very slight. But it's really just trying to bring this area in line with the zoning that does currently exist in the area. So that was what we were really trying to do with this portion. We just wanted to get that back in front of the group, just to help clarify that expectation. This is not supposed to be an intensification along our rural edge. It is kind of a taper down to a lower in this area. But we are really trying to clarify the expectations for the communities and the property owners about what could happen in this area. So we wanted to just provide an opportunity for further comment and questions about this change. This is, I think, from a SAS perspective, really a cleanup item, just trying to clean up what the map looks like and improve consistency across the zoning and the comprehensive plan. Because if someone wants to develop in this area, the zoning would prevail over the comprehensive plan. The 2010 master plan essentially said no development over here, but development could happen. So try to improve the clarity there. So Ellie, I'll turn over you for some Q and A.
Okay. I'm going to try to keep this section really quick so that we can get to the next question. I'd also still like to talk about the overlay proposed, so, um, I don't know where to start. Jenny, Valerie, Tom have hands up, and then we've got three. Does anybody have a specific comment just about this question about, um? Yeah, Valerie does. Jenny and Tom. Okay, so, go ahead. Let's, Tom had his hand up first.
Thank you. I would just say that the Croze survey, the Croze master plan is very, very straightforward about this. Whatever we can do to maximize the protection of 250 against development should be the standard. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Jenny?
Um, yeah, I, I'll, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So I want, I wanted to provide a little bit of input about this. I don't feel like extremely strong about this, but I want to put this out there just for other people to think about. So what I feel like, when I look at this type of change, I understand staff's desire to make it be honest and make it consistent with what can already happen there. But when you put a color on a map, it, it, the intention there is to encourage something to happen. And this is a place where the master plan has given us clear guidance in the past about protecting 250. And I understand that whether this color is put on the map or not, it's possible. But I just, so I just want to make that point. And like, the flip side of that would be right there, and on the same, and the same spot on that map is the Gateway Market property. And staff want to color that neighborhood mixed use, which would definitely be something we would want to encourage to have happen there. But that property zoning is highway commercial. So if someone buys that property, that's the zoning that carries with that land, and that's probably the way it will develop. So my example in using that property, because it's right there, is to make sure that people understand that we can make it pink and call it neighborhood mixed use, because that's what we would like to encourage. But the fact is, it can develop by right, highway commercial, and it probably will. And so, and so to answer the question that's on the table now is, by putting the pale yellow color there, I think you are encouraging development just as you are by doing the light pink color instead of the highway commercial. So, you know, I, it's not something that I feel terribly strong about, but I want to point out to the group that when you're putting the color there, I do think it's giving the indication that that's okay. Now, maybe that's fair enough to be clear to the community that this could happen here. Or maybe you're encouraging something to happen in a place where, you know, maybe it wouldn't. I guess I'll, I'll want to take up too much time because I have a ton of questions, but I do want to make sure that we're capturing all the public comment, because it seems like there's a lot to cover here. And I think, I know that there's questions and things in the chats, but not everyone can see the question and answer. Not everyone can hear or see the answers if it's in the Q and A from the public. So I want to make sure, I feel like we're rushing through some of these questions where we haven't even heard from some C C A C members. And I'm sure there's public out there that, even though they're in the chats and the Q and A, have more questions, and we've moved on, I know, as a matter of time. But I'm, I'm worried about having this move too quickly. I understand it's still a draft, but you're going to come to the planning commission with information that you're getting today. And so I've said it already, that I think it's a lot to cover. So I'll stop talking so you can keep covering it. Thank you.
I completely agree. And at this point, I'm just frustrated that, like, this seems like the most important meeting we've had over this entire year of master, you know, and, and now we're, it's like all this fluff. And now we're finally in the part where we're talking about the actual changes we're making to the plan, and we're, and we're having to rush through it at, in an hour and a half lunch meeting. And we've got 46 members of the public, plus all of us, having to take this time. And I can't even call on everybody. And we've got so much to cover. So I completely agree. And I hope we can have more meetings. I can't even read all of the chat, but it looks very interesting so far. So, um, I, uh, I'm not sure, um, I guess I've got Valerie's hand up, and we've got Larry and Zach still with their hands up. You want to go, Valerie, and then I'll try to get the two attendees?
Sure, I'll be quick. I, I generally support the staff's proposal in this regard. And I would note, because I didn't notice it at first, but their proposed map does show a strip of green along Route 250 to preserve that vegetation or green space in that area to address those comments. My only, I guess, negative feedback would be that I would suggest, or I would caution against changing the areas that are currently shown on the master plan for, in the darker yellow color. Don't change those to the pale yellow. Leave them as they are. Those folks perhaps have made investments in their property in light of, you know, how it's been designated on the master plan for about 10 years. It's a pretty minor difference between the pale yellow and the darker yellow. But it, those, I think there's eight landowners who are affected by the change. I, I want to make sure they are aware of it and be hopeful, helpful to know what their thoughts are. But I would suggest leave that alone, but all the rest is fine. Thank you.
All right, Larry, you're, you're up, if you want to unmute.
I think that may have been a mistake. Sorry.
Okay, well then, let's move on to Zach.
Yeah, my question is, is we were sold on, in the Chesterfield Landing, that some of that land behind the houses there, behind Oxbow, was going to be our communal space, our common land. But it looks like Chesterfield's trying to give it to somebody to create a park. How did that happen, that the land's given when we were sold? That was a kind of our common space, very similar to Corey Farms?
I'll respond directly to that question about the Chesterfield Landing and the hash park shown. Now, it's again, working to use the public park designation to show areas that are part of the county's publicly accessible parks and greenways network. We're starting our first steps at updating the green areas and breaking those out more, and really updating the greenway alignments to reflect trail development that's happened since 2010. There's currently an easement plan under review at the county office building into a trail easement on the Chesterfield Landing open space that you've pointed out right there. I think that's still under review and still being worked through, but we wanted to highlight, I think, that connection. It's been a really important part of the Licking Hole Creek Trail Network that was shown in the 2010 master plan. So that's what that is. And we're still working this up. This is our first draft and the first time we've kind of started bringing this back out. We got from this group in early August about the Parks and Greenways feedback and some updates on Parks and Rec. We're starting to work through that right now. So I'll just flag that. That's why that's shown. That's very, it's actual, that's not set in stone. So that's what that is.
Sure. And I'd love to, you know, for some of the people in the Chesterfield Landing group, for us to be included more on what that looks like, because the, the talk of the town is going around that it's going to be some kind of park or something like that. And we're like, well, where are people going to park cars to come to this park? So if it's just part of the Croze Trail Network system, we love that. But if it's a park, we have concerns.
And that's what that is. It's showing the, the width of the trail easement that would pass through that area. It would be a passive facility, no parking or no active amenities. It'd just be, here's a point where it connects to the street.
Ellie, I got my hand up. I'm sorry, I can't find the button.
Okay. Um, well, should we, Emily, Carol, did you still have a comment?
Yeah, I do, actually. Following up on Zach's comment, I'm one of the homeowners there on Oxbow. I'm actually the very last house in the cul-de-sac. And yes, the map shows the parcel lines, but it doesn't really reflect reality, because there is a cul-de-sac there at the end of Oxbow. Mailboxes are there. I'm concerned that this designation, if it's not considered by the county carefully, could create some access issues as well for all of us who have homes on Oxbow. As you're probably aware, it's a pretty steep hill, but a lot of us do have flat backyards towards the bottom of the, our lots. And all of us use that access point right now for gardening and for like, hauling mulch. And if that becomes a public road that we are somehow restricted to access, that could be a significant issue for those of us who use that right now. We were explaining, we bought the house, that it would still be available for HOA to kind of establish the rules for how that's used. So if, if Stanley Martin is trying to propose a new easement, and they haven't talked to the landowners, I think that's going to create a lot of tension in the community. I also think that traffic is an issue as well. It's a, it's a small cul-de-sac. There's mailboxes, and it's going to create access issues for the mailman if there's parking or a lot of people trying to access the trails from that point.
Okay, thanks, Emily. David, what's your?
Thank you. Sorry, I can't find the button. So I support what the staff is proposing. I think, I think those are good plans. I, I'm not 100% in love with the overlay district, but that's just a personal issue I have. And, uh, but I think the staff's done a great job of looking at this. We do need to look at the missing metal. And frankly, the only way to get close to some reasonable prices when you have a limited amount of land is through density. You know, I know everybody's concentrating on this comp plan, but there is an overall comp plan within the entire county, and we are a part of it. And you can't argue that the majority of the affordability in this community is up and down 29 in the other growth areas. And it's incumbent on us to become a part of that solution. And we're just not hearing that. I mean, I've heard multiple comments from people saying they don't want affordable housing. This is not the place. I mean, it's very exclusionary, and it's, it's unfortunate, is probably the word I should use right now. You know, we need to, to look as ourselves as a, as a part of a whole. And anything we can do to facilitate affordability and more inclusivity, we should. And I, I don't think I've heard a lot of comments today that, that are going down that track. Thanks.
Um, I think that the, uh, what, what I've heard, I mean, what Tom has said is that we, we do have affordable housing here, and what we don't have is infrastructure. So to add more density, uh, is, is, is the thing we're opposing.
Well, I, I, that's just, we just fundamentally disagree, which is the point to this entire process here. But, you know, I disagree with Tom, and I disagree with you on that. I, I think that density is the way to get it. And I don't think that we have a great deal of affordability here, especially relative to the population.
Yeah, but don't you think that builders are building what sells, and people are paying what they, you know?
Building what they can get approved. And it is so incredibly difficult to, to get through the process. They're going for the low-hanging fruit, which is whatever happens to be the current zoning. I know there's a few out people that look at it and say, you know, like White Gates, and they're, they're giving it a shot with an S U P and whatnot. But, you know, by and large, they don't do that. Now luckily, because of the market and because of the desirability of living in Croze, they can get away with that. I'm saying we should encourage them to, 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 to not just get away with the cheapest, lowest-risk, easiest thing to do, which is what we have right now, which is a, I mean, it's a country club in the western part of the county.
Matt?
Just a few quick notes, kind of building on a few other things. Again, recognizing too that I'm still very new to all of this. And so I'm, I'm learning on the fly, as many people are. One thing I, I want to do is I just want to clarify what we're talking about affordable housing to be. Are we talking 30, you know, 30, 50, 80% AMI? And really thinking about like, what is affordable? But I also want to point to, I think, Sandy's point about jobs is actually a very, a big point. Because if, if, if we're- Because if, if we're, if we're trying to build affordable housing for, for a lower AMI, right, like we've got to provide jobs, like the jobs have to be accessible. I mean, the people are, and that's why the density of affordable housing closer to Charlottesville, because it's accessible to the jobs that then people can get to by mass transit or public transit or whatever. So I think those things need to be, it gets them into a more complex conversation than just simply building affordable housing. It has to be very tactical. But we need to have as many tools to our, at our use as possible. Yeah, and to address that. So I think, you know, we need to have a much more complex understanding. And I want to, I would love to see like a really clear clarification on like, what are we talking about when we're talking about affordable housing in Charleston or in Croze? That's one thing. Yeah, I think that's it for now. I might have something else later.
Sorry, I'm reading the chat also. And Tom?
Yes, thank you. Let, let's go back to this density issue. We may be very clear that the density in Croze was not determined by the residents of Croze. It was determined by the county. In the 2004 master plan, that's where that density of 12,198 came from. The county, the community didn't raise its hand and say, we'd like to be 12,198. That's what 17 consultants told us we were going to. So to Mr. Mitchell's thing about density, we've surpassed the density in what's already been approved and yet to be built. Again, let's go back to the affordable housing. I, I think, and I've showed you what the data is. This is a county's data, not my data. And if I took the 15%, it shows that we should have, over the last 19 years, been building on the average of 1.2 affordable housing units per month. Let the county show Croze that it's been deficient in affordable housing. And then we can, we can make modifications to accommodate affordable housing. But until someone shows us that, I think we've done a damn good job. Not to mention to Mr. Mitchell too, that PHA owned the land that the view was on. PHA had, had that land. They met with the community for multiple months to come up with an affordable housing development there. And what did they do? They sold the land to the view and we got 126 affordable luxury apartments. So again, if we go back to density, it wasn't, it wasn't the citizens of Croze that determined that. It was the county. And we've been living with it and we've been deceived and lied to. And thank Mike Marshall for, again, being another person who was around at the time who remembers what we were told.
Um, those are not luxury, first of all. And second of all, PHA didn't go forward because too many things were being asked of them to provide proppers to make it financially feasible for the project to move forward. I mean, you got what you asked for. You beat them over the head and they threw their hands in and they sold it to somebody else.
We didn't beat them over the head to be very, to be very honest with you. And I bet you, you were never at any of those meetings. But I was at all of them. And we came to, we came to an agreement that that's where that, that, that development would be. As far as proppers, that, again, the community doesn't determine proppers, does it?
Come on, man. That's, that is a dishonest statement to say. Proppers are the thing that developers give the community to get it approved. To say that-
You guys now, you guys now have laws that says that the proppers have to be directly related. You got the finest laws you can buy.
Okay.
That's a good one, Tom. You're hilarious.
We're running out of time and you know, clearly this isn't entirely different. I mean, we have way, way too much on our agenda for one meeting. So with, I, I would like to have another meeting about all the the topics we didn't get to. I guess we could. And Leandra, I'll let you decide I, what we can do with the last 15 minutes because there's the old trail discussion. And, and I, I really want to be able to talk about the overlay proposal too.
Yeah, I think Rachel will take this one.
Sure. I, I would love if we could try to get to Old Trail. We have, I think, 15 minutes left and 90 minute meeting. So that should give us enough time to get to Old Trail. And then we can touch base on other feedback and how, how we can share that. Is that okay, Ally?
Yeah, that's fine.
Great. So our last question, our last site specific question is relating to Old Trail and land use in Old Trail. So there have been some, some changes to Old Trail. I encourage you to look at your summary map and see what those are and, and why those changes were made. But one change we did not make and we wanted to bring to the CAC and the community for discussion is the property in Old Trail that is along Old Trail Drive. Andrew's circling it right now with his hand cursor. And 250 next to Henley Middle School. There has been a special use permit request on this property for a sports facility. It is currently deferred. It hasn't been approved and moved forward. But the request was for a large indoor facility that would not be consistent with the current land use. The 2010 land use calls for neighborhood density residential, which is a lower density residential category, three to six units per acre. Very small commercial uses would be allowed in that category, but not something of the scale that has been proposed. We haven't heard a lot of support and discussion around additional uses that would be off 250 throughout this process, though we understand that there are some members of the community who really want this particular use here. So we want to bring that to the group for discussion. What should the, what is the appropriate land use here? Knowing that that proposal that is currently deferred could move forward in the future and how we should handle that. So, and I will also point out we have shown a buffer area along 250 here. That's in, in the green on the map. South of that yellow space. So we do want to acknowledge that we've heard from the community that they don't want to see a lot of development right on 250. But would it be appropriate if it were stepped back a little bit, if it had an entrance off of Old Trail, to allow some more intense development in that area that's currently shown for neighborhood density? So Andrew, I don't know if you want to move forward and show what the question is really quickly for the group to consider. And then we can come back to the slide as we talk. The question is, what are your, what are your thoughts? Or do you support other, other uses that are more, perhaps more intense than or neighborhood density residential on this, on this particular site?
Okay. I'm going to answer first. I don't think that we need to change the land use of these places. I think I'll just echo my dad and Jenny that, you know, these areas have already been negotiated as far as their land use designations in previous master planning and, and in their, you know, in the original Old Trail zoning math amendment. And so if, you know, if Croze Sports can happen, they have a process to get approved. And I don't think we need to open ourselves up to you know, if Croze Sports doesn't happen, if we've changed the land use, we're essentially asked for, encouraged other commercial uses there. And I want all commercial uses, commercial development to be encouraged downtown. So I, I'm going to say no. And then we've got Joe with the hand up.
Yeah, I think I'm kind of like Ally. I mean, when it comes to, with respect to that specific proposal for the sports facility, I, I was supportive of that because I think it's consistent with the uses next door with the schools. And it is consistent sort of with its proximity to Old Trail. I'm not sure that we want to open the door to other potential uses. I don't know if, if Andrew, Rachel, if there's a way. The way the question is worded, any non-residential uses. I mean, I think, I don't want to see other types of non-residential uses other than that one specific thing, which I think would be a positive. I just want to add one more comment, which is a little more broad, which is, I understand the concerns about density and adding people and, and also Ally's concern about adding non-residential uses away from downtown. But, and I think Terry had a, Terry Miyamoto had a comment earlier about, you know, people driving into Charlottesville and the, and our current master plan and the new draft that Andrew shared, which he probably won't have time to, talks about a self sustaining town. Right? And part of a self sustaining town is having people here, having job opportunities and, and centers where people can work and live. And so, you know, these things like having the indoor sports facility, yes, it's not downtown. But if that saves somebody from driving into Charlottesville, we're saving traffic. That alleviates traffic on 250, 240. By having people living at White Gate or at the Old Dominion Village where they can work closer to downtown, potentially when that develops, we're saving people from having to drive into Charlottesville. So I don't want to lose sight of the fact that, that some of this development, even though it may stretch a little bit out from downtown, for example, in the Old Trail Village, right, the village model, we are saving people the ability, the need to drive into Charlottesville. And we, we need a critical mass of people here to be customers for those businesses to stay out here and to have those businesses. It's kind of a chicken and egg thing. And so, I mean, we have to have enough people in the density and we also have the businesses to keep people out here. That's it.
Alan, can I clarify quickly? I think I said we had a special use permit for Croze Sports. It's actually a rezoning request. But when we, when we receive rezoning requests, staff will look at it and review it against the comprehensive plan and the master plan and the land use. And so when we did our first round of review on this, we looked at the land use plan and saw an urban density residential designation. And the proposal that was submitted was not consistent with that land use designation. So staff would make that recommendation to the planning commission and the board that it's not consistent with your land use plan. And I understand there's support for this specific use. But if this moves forward and the, the neighborhood density residential stays on the plan, it would be an approval that was inconsistent with your plan. And we really try not to do that at the county or we hold our comprehensive plans and master plans up. And, and try and, try and keep development as consistent as possible with those plans. Because, because if you don't, they lose legitimacy over time.
Okay, Valerie?
Thank you. First, full disclosure, I think most, many of you know this, but I have represented the applicant for Croze Sports and represented the owners and developers of Old Trail. But, and this is just a comment, we did have a community meeting on the rezoning application. I believe it was in February. We had two, one for just the Old Trail residents to let them know about the proposal and then a broader, larger community meeting as well. At the, at the second meeting, you know, we, we really didn't have a lot of concerns expressed really by anyone. It was mostly traffic related to make sure that the traffic could be accommodated. There was a large amount of support for this. I like Joe's proposal, if there's a way to do it, I'm not sure how, to somehow, you know, find a designation that would at least preserve the opportunity for something that's more recreational, educational in, in concept than more commercial. There's a lot of very educational and institutional components, really recreational aspects of that project more than commercial. The owners were proposing it to be owned by a nonprofit foundation, among other things, and have lots of partnerships with the, you know, with the school system and both after school care as well as use of the rec facilities by Henley and a lot of other things. So if there's a way to keep that option open, that would be great. Even those, some of the neighbors immediately closest to the project, after the developer met with them, my understanding is that they were, they were more comfortable with it. I don't want to say they were, I don't want to speak for them, but I think there was a lot of support for that. So I just would ask that there's a way to have it both ways. That would be great for the applicant. Thank you.
Oh, is Ally gone? Looks like Ally might be gone. So I don't, I'll see if she jumps back on, but I don't see any other hands raised at this time. There she is. Welcome back.
Yeah, sorry. My, apparently my laptop was not plugged in. So I thought it was, uh, anyway. So I missed the last minute. And it's hard on my phone to see.
Alan, there are currently no hands raised. This discussion.
Thanks. So I think, I think we, we all need more time to talk about a lot of these proposals. So I hope, and I, and I hope you saw my request that we get a copy of all the comments, because I cannot keep up with the comments on the Q and A. And I saw requests to get a lot of these, a lot of this information published in the Gazette before, before we move forward. And so I guess that's, that's all I have to say before we adjourn here.
Can I have one question before we are done?
Yeah, go ahead Jenny.
Um, so for Andrew or Rachel, I guess, yeah, I'd like, I'd really like to see the chats and the Q and A because I could not follow and also listen and look at all my notes and take notes. So, and I, I'm sure it would be helpful for others to see that too. And I'm asking that not to wait till you're trying to get in front of planning commission. And I guess also in the chats, I did see a request that maybe there's a whole special meeting that's really site specific things that people are seeing on the maps that are concerning them about probably their neighborhoods or something that they have questions about. Some of that might be easily cleared up, but it's causing angst, I think, to see it and not have an opportunity to ask and understand. And so I wonder if you can explain what you're trying to bring before the planning commission, so I can understand that. As a commissioner, what's your goal to take out of this, which I think is, there's a lot more content that we could cover. And there's probably some, a lot of questions about this specific thing. And we have, we're not going to even get to talk about the overlay. And I think there's, I've seen some comments in the chats about that. So what are you bringing to the planning commission that you've gathered out of this meeting? That seems to have a lot of public interest. What's, what are you rushing to get to the planning commission on the 20th? What's your presentation?
Rachel, you want to take?
Yeah, sorry. I was just trying to find my cursor. So I could unmute. So our plan for the planning commission meeting, I believe it's October 21st, tentatively, is to bring the draft land use map and get their feedback on the map generally, but specific topics that were not, there was not consensus around. So a couple of them that were discussed today will bring the feedback we've heard and let them deliberate on those topics. We haven't, again, we're, we're in this meeting kind of on the fly. So I haven't delved into all the comments and chats and questions. We also have the public input online. So if there are any issues that, or themes that arise out of that, that we feel the commission should weigh in on, we'll bring those as well.
Okay.
I'll say, it's not the last time. Sorry Jenny, I didn't mean to cut you off, but we will have, there will be opportunities for the community and the CAC to see the land use map again. I don't know that our schedule allows that to happen before the next planning commission meeting. We have other topics we need to get to and connectivity and, and transportation is next on the list. So that's where our schedule is.
I mean, it's just, this is the most important topic.
Can I please respond to that just really quick? As a planning commissioner, I'm deeply bothered by the suggestion that there's not a consensus when the community is not able, they're seeing all this stuff. They have all these questions because they're seeing colors all over the map. I had the same reaction. I expressed some of those concerns yesterday at a meeting with staff, with Ann. And I feel like this is what happened with Pantop and there was a lack of participation. And I think the discussion fell in the hands of that CAC. And when there was a tie or not a consensus, the commission, the planning commission broke the tie. So it bothers me as a representative of the Whitehall District that without giving people a chance to express their opinions, even just the members here today, I don't know where some people stand on this. So it's easy to walk away and say, oh, it was sort of a tie and we need the commission to break this consensus. If that's your intention is to bring these specific questions that this group hasn't even fully gotten to respond to in this amount of time, plus the other community's questions. If your intention is to bring that to the commission, have them break the tie and then say, this is how it's going to be for Croze and move forward. I have a problem with that. I'll still be there to participate, but I will let my fellow commissioners know that I don't feel like the community has had a chance to respond even to what you have here. And I don't know what the online response is, but I don't- even to what you have here. And I don't know what the online response is, but I don't, I don't, I understand where the commission plays a role. Obviously I'm a planning commissioner, but I, I want to have the community have a chance to represent itself. And that's where I take my lead from. And I can't, I'm having trouble following all the chats. And I feel like there's a huge amount of material that people want covered. And so if you're vetted to this date of the 21st, that's my position is that I don't feel like people have had, even just from the CCAC and the community, to have, give input on these specific questions in addition to all the other questions that are popping up in the chat. So.
I, I mean, I will be at that planning commission to, to express that, that this is what you go forward with at that meeting. I want to let Sean say something because we haven't heard from him and he's got his hand up.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, I think it's pretty clear to everyone that there's this palpable frustration among members, among the community. I kind of feel like we've hit some sort of tipping point with a lot of these infrastructure questions. And more and more people are just ready to put up the stop sign to it all until we hear more from the county. I would maybe suggest that our elected representatives like Ann, I think we need to hold like a town hall meeting just to let the public share their, their feelings and, and thoughts on this. Kind of even outside of the master plan process, because this format is just really hard for people to, I think, to really engage the larger part of the community. I mean, yes, we are in COVID and we're doing the best we can with Zoom. But this is not a normal master plan process where we would be meeting in, in the, in the high school gymnasium or the cafeteria. And we saw the number of people involved at the beginning of, of this process before COVID. I just think we need more opportunities for, for our elected officials to hear from, from the public. And I think sometimes staff is caught in the middle of this. And I think people want to speak directly to Ann and kind of hear from the board of supervisors, like, what is the plan? Where is the immediate future for infrastructure on these issues? And I would invite her to hold a public meeting on Zoom if need be. So we can speak directly to her and, and have people, I think, vent a little bit. I think we're at that point.
Thanks Sean. I agree. Like I think just the participation in this meeting versus the participation on the public input site just, just clarifies how the public input site is not, despite best intentions and a pretty good effort, is not really engaging the public. And we have a lot more people who want to, who want to chime in. And a meeting like this is really a better format or, you know, a meeting like, I wish it could be in person, but a meeting like Sean's recommending. So I just, and so I would encourage everybody who didn't get to speak or who has comments to also email us and, and email staff and email Jenny and Ann so that you're really getting direct communication. And yeah, I don't know. We're out of time.
We'll make sure to convey all of these comments, the concerns about the timeline, the concerns about the format to decision makers and leaders moving forward. So we'll, we'll come back and let you know if there's any changes to the timeline or process based on that. But right now we, we kind of have our marching orders to stay on this timeline and we're trying to do the best we can. So.
Yeah, I understand that. It just, it was so many months of, it really felt like fluff where, where we had good attendance. And now that we're really getting to the, to the decisions, it's, it's like, we don't have enough time. So, you know, I appreciate all you guys are doing and I'm really glad that we at least have this format to, to talk about it. And that's it. Thank you guys so much for coming. And I know the middle of the day is really hard. And, you know, but the thing is, it's also really hard at dinnertime. So I, I actually think it was kind of nice to have this daytime meeting. And I don't think we should have all meetings at this time. But especially with Zoom fatigue, I think it's really hard for people to, to get in at seven after being on the computer all day. So I think it was a nice idea. And I, but unfortunately there's a few even committee members who couldn't be here because of work. So I just want to say thanks. We'll try to, try to make it as fair as possible. The next CCAC meeting is tentatively scheduled for Wednesday, October 14th at 7:00 PM. Opportunities for the public to access and participate in the electronic meeting will be posted at a later date in accordance with emergency ordinance number 20-a6 and open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. If you're not on the CCAC notification list, please let me know or let Andrew or any of us know so that, because I do have an email list about this to help spread out materials and also Tim's community association list. So thank you and have a good afternoon.